I'm gonna call the work session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillors Pitts.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Rodley.
Here.
Stair.
Here.
Woodrow.
Here.
Pictionary.
I am here, thank you.
Alright, we have two items tonight. The first is the City Manager Compensation 2021 with Chain.
Hello again, Mayor and Councillor. I will try to talk fast and do what I can to try to make up some time for everybody, but I also recognize that for many of you, this is the first go around of meeting and making a wage recommendation for the City Manager. The City Manager is employed under an employment contract reporting directly to council as part of the City Manager's employment contract. Council is required to meet on an annual basis with the intent of submitting a recommendation regarding a salary or cost of living adjustment for Nancy Newton's position. I'm here today to seek guidance, not specifically a number, but a guidance that council would be willing to approve for next week's regular session. Your packet includes a number of attachments. There isn't a very specific methodology that is used in making a determination, so we provide lots of info and I provided as well three recommendations. You're not required to go with any of those recommendations, but I wanted to put something on the table for council to consider. Inside your packets, there are three attachments, as I said. All of them are associated with what I would describe if we were in a labor world as past practice for ways of looking at compensation. One of those is the, which is attachment one, is the salary index comparison. So that's our look at different CPIs. There are currently three CPIs that we're able to look at and then we pull an average of those CPIs. It gives us generally a sense of what the cost of living changes have been for this particular position. And once again, Nancy was hired in April 20th of 2020. Her initial job offer was intended to have a wage reflective of the June 1. It was a crystal ball of that, but she has not had a wage increase and of course inflation factors and a number of things have changed between April 20th and where we sit today. So that had an index factor. If we look at the three CPIs of an average of 3.23, once again, that's just factoring what the cost of living differences are. In addition to that, attachment two is a look at, I was gonna say comparable communities, but historically we've looked at both comparable communities and we've also looked at the city of Eugene and Lane County, recognizing that on population sizes, they are not what we would typically determine as a comparability, but wanting to make sure that you could see that so that you know where we sit with our neighbors. And then also it basically pulls together or does pull together all of the factors that we consider compensation, which includes wages, deferred compensation per pickup, any kind of HRA, VIBA, car stipends. There's a host of different ways that City Managers get compensated. We look at all of that. We total those up and then we apply, which is a pretty traditional practice for all of our labor contracts and our non-represented employees here at the city of Springfield. A cost of labor adjustment is kind of an equalizer way of looking at ourselves across the board in a more neutral way. So when we factor that in, that shows that she would be sitting at, she, Nancy Newton, would be slightly below 9% of average. Once again, that's not the best factor, so I threw in an attachment three. An attachment three is really excluding communities that are of larger size, which would be the Eugene Lane County, and really looking at it in a way that I would say is probably more accurate for the way that we would look at other positions that report up directly through and to the City Manager. So when I pull out the Eugene Lane County comparison, you see that that number changes to five and a half percent below average. And there's a wide range, so it's not that Nancy's sitting in the middle. It's, it is, it's not a median score. It is really where she sits compared to average score or average wages to comparable communities. So with that, I took those numbers and applied three recommendations. These are intended to be conversation starters for council. They're not intended to say that you're limited to one of these three options. And so option one is really just looking at the cost of inflation and just adjusting her wage in comparison to cost of inflation, which is 3.23%. And then I've applied what the fiscal year cost impact of that wage would look like to the city budget. So that's what option one looks like. Option two is, is a recommendation to put her to average and doing this retroactive back to July 1, which is comparative with option one as well. And that recommendation is the most expensive based on those factors and it's just slightly over $10,500 addition to the fiscal year budget. And then option three is basic, what it, option three is, option three reflects that same five and a half percent or 5.5, 2.3% increase of adjusting her wage to average without a retro and making an effect of the next coming payroll cycle that we have, which would be the October 24th. That option is, would be my preferred recommended option because it adjusts the wage and make sure that the City Manager for the city of Springfield is paid competitively and doesn't do the retro, but still hits a kind of a budgetary number that's consistent with what option one was laying out. Once again, those are just three options that I looked at as a, if I was to make a recommendation for council for you to consider. But the ask for this session is some guidance on what council would like to see as part of a wage recommendation that we would submit for council approval next Monday. And with that, I'll pause and ask for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Um, so I'm curious. When looking at this comparables, is that it really doesn't tell me their ability to pay in regards to what, what kind of income do these cities have? And it's, and to have that, to have that piece of information would, to me, would be very informative because there is towns such as Lake Oswego is highly evaluated city. And so the, their taxation can create a, per capita, a much greater pool of money or expendable cash, disposable cash as opposed to perhaps even like Grants Pass, for example, or Albany that doesn't have an extremely high valuation on, on the average piece of property or earth. You know, it doesn't have that. I mean, we're comparing, I mean, we could literally be comparing apples to oranges in, with this information or should say without having that information, at least in my mind. Because again, it doesn't tell us like Corvallis has always had a, at least historically, I recall Corvallis is popping up. This is paying their CEOs good money, you know, much more than we've traditionally have paid, but you look at, you look at their, their spendable, their income or their budget per person. So I, I don't know, it's, and I guess I'm not, I mean, I'm just one councillor. But for me, it could really skew these numbers in a sense of, you know, if our, if our numbers are, you know, our spendable income or our, our total budget coming in or collected taxes coming in per capita as opposed to some other cities, we could be, we could be very much way underpaying her. Or she can be in the ballpark closer than what is, what is shown is at, at 5.5 or almost 9%. I just want to, as far as, this has nothing to do with her value to me. If we had tons of cash, all the councillors would get paid and she would get double her salary, but, but it's, you know, we don't. So to me, that just, that just seems to make sense to have that information. But again, I may be late in the ballpark. I, I'm okay with giving her raise. I don't, I mean, she, I think we need to pay her for what we can afford. But again, I would be more comfortable because I have a fiduciary responsibility to look at all the information that may be available to make this most sound fiduciary decision. Okay, I'm done. If I made, I don't know if you've made any sense of that or not, but.
Yeah, so I would have to get, probably get better guidance from council moving forward on how you're defining ability to pay. So I come from a labor background and ability to pay is a very different context. I hear you on the tax revenue or what's in the budget projections, but I would have to think about with Nate, what the thought is. There's other ways that I would do it from a more traditional standpoint, which is you could look at a narrowed population approach. That's plus or minus 50%. We slightly exceed that on both ends of the, of the fence. And historically, the city of Springfield, and I'm just saying historically from the almost five years that I've been here, you know, we right-size that through the cost of labor adjustments and, and the cost of labor adjustment in some ways is, is supposed to connect to the ability to pay concept, although that number, sorry, there's some sort of event going on outside City Hall. There is, I don't know if you can hear the horn honking and the people yelling. So, so that certainly, certainly could play a, a role into that. And even cost of labor isn't always, I think the best indicator as it shows, you know, Bend, for example, being slightly more expensive from a cost of labor than Springfield. I've always find that statistic to be quite odd because I'm familiar with the Bend area. And they certainly seem to have a lot more revenue at this point, but we could certainly look at ways of both narrowing it down and looking at it from a budgetary level to help council moving forward.
Yeah, I'm not putting this out there in any way of saying that I'm representing the council feeling, but I, I'm just expressing what, what's in my mind. And I certainly am fine with what the majority of the councillor consensus is, but I just thought I would throw that out there in, and maybe helpful to others or, you know, I know it would be helpful for me, but it may be helpful for others. So.
Leonard.
Thanks. I, I, I think the councillor Pictionary is bringing up some relevant metrics. I like Chain. I come from a labor angle here. And so I would also throw in the difficulty of the job. I can't imagine that the City Manager in Albany or the City Manager in Grants Pass has had to make the decisions of the difficulty that Nancy has over the last year, and I think that should be recognized. I, just for grins, I went and did some comparisons of cities that were bigger. I noticed that the City Managers in Vancouver and the City Managers in Eugene, for instance, similar populations, also similar wages. And surprisingly, they didn't make that much more than the people that are staffing the jobs that we just talked about, Albany or Grants Pass or Springfield. So I, well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to recommend, I, I'm in favor of step of option two that Chain laid out. I'd like to bring Nancy up to the average and make a retro to July the 1st. I would also ask that if we adopt option one, which is just the cost of living, that we take into account the projections through the end of the year. Right now, what I'm understanding is that COLA might be going up by the end of the year up to four and a half, 5%. So that's, that's where I'm at right now.
Steve.
I support no less than five and a half percent. She's the greatest asset this city has. We need to show other people we respect that. We need to show her respect, that respect. And she's worth it.
Merrily.
I was looking at option two. The reason I was looking at option two is because we didn't have any probationary period. We didn't have any period. We, we had a certain period of time and we evaluated her after a short period of when she first came on. So I'm comfortable with making retroactive and bringing forward to the, to the salary that we wanted to be at. So I'm, I'm more in favor of option two.
Alright, looks like we lost Cory. Damien, did you have an opinion here?
I'm actually trying to find the actual document. It's gonna get lost in my email. Is there any way that it can be put up on the screen? I mean, I took notes, but still. Perfect.
My question is, which document would you like to see councillor Pitts?
Actually, that's, I'll pull it up. Like I said, it's, it's Monday. You have to excuse me. But like, give me a second. Talk amongst yourselves.
AJ, I, I think what Damien was asking for was the three options.
Right, right. But I can pull it up myself. But I mean, if, if it will benefit anybody else having on the screen, that'd be great as well.
There, there, there it is, Damien.
Okay.
So I can tell you I'm comfortable with option two. And I think a lot like, when you, when you look forward here as far as where we are from a wage perspective, it just makes a lot of sense based on, based on what Nancy's performance has been.
I also agree with option two. I mean, I think money aside, we have to think about the livability of a place. And so, you know, we can do all kinds of comparisons, but we, I mean, regardless, I mean, she's still a citizen who, you know, is taking up residence here and, you know, the livability could be a reason to keep somebody here as well as push them away. And so I think those things we need to think about if we're looking into other cities.
I'm double checking to see if Cory's in the attendee list before we move on to the next topic. I think I hear enough folks to, to kind of go forward here. And since we're bringing it back with a regular session now, Joe, go ahead.
Don't get me wrong. I'm okay with, with option two. I just was voicing what I was thinking that potentially in the future or whatever, to come back with that information. I just want to be more comfortable, more settled with it. But again, I'm okay with moving forward instead of slowing things down and give her some assurance that I completely support her and she's worth it all. So I don't have a problem with option two.
Yeah, and I, and I think, yeah, so like, let's, Chain, let's package it up for regular session. And yeah, and then I think it's the same question that we always keep talking about where, you know, as we sort of manage our three employees, right? Like we're always looking for opportunities and maybe, and keep helping us to do it more effectively, better. Uh-oh, here comes Cory. Alright Cory, we're, we didn't quite wrap up. So did you have it, did you have an opinion or did you want to just save it for regular sessions and?
I didn't hear where everybody else landed.
Basically mostly, most people ended up on option two.
Yeah, that's where I want to be. Yeah, I thought maybe I was gonna be the only one who wants to give a good way the barn, but no, I want them up to.
Alright. Chain, do you need anything else from us?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you everybody for your time.
Maybe you could just start with a quick, to Joe's question, maybe you could just start with a, at some point, an email just explaining where that, what that geo-labor adjustment is. That might help answer some, start the conversation.
Will do. Absolutely.
Alright, very good. Next item looks like we are returning to streetlights with Brian.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Councillor. I'm very happy to be joining with you and we've got 30 minutes to talk about the most important topic of the world, the streetlights. And so I'm gonna move briskly through the slides with the intent to reserve time for your questions at the end. And so Scott is going to join me and he is going to be doing the slide wizard part. And so here we go. So we did visit with you on September 20th, and so I'm going to recap that very briefly and then move to our, our key question of the evening that we would like to ask you. And so on our next slide, you'll see that we own about 4,500 streetlights, about 30% have been converted to LED. And the key point I really would like to point out is that, third bullet there, the current system's antiquated and aging and is in need of expensive and frequent repairs. So that is project need number one. The system is at the end of its functional life and we are having to replace fixtures fairly regularly. We had a cost of just $650,000 last year and we also have a deficit that we were trying to make up with Springfield Utility Board. So next slide please, Scott. We have the justification of LED lights use much less energy and even less maintenance cost than legacy light systems do. We can improve street lighting levels to promote better, better traffic and security. We, as a result of the system failure and of the efficiencies that we can gain by using LED lights, we plan to upgrade all non-LED fixtures to LED. And we're recommending the use of an ESCO and I'll get into what an energy services company is in a moment. The project cost is just over $2 million. And the project need number two is the last bullet, which is this project upon completion will save the city approximately $184,000 per year, which escalates over time because of inflation of materials and labor and of energy. That starts out at $15,000 a month of street funds. So we can save $15,000 every month in the street fund if we were to go forward with this project. The finances are shown on our next slide and how graphically the $184,000 there on, on your left is what the current cost of, excuse me, let me, let me start that one again. Look at the top line of the graph. That green sloping line that starts at about $320,000 and moves on up to just under $600,000 is our annual cost of maintaining the current system. If we were to replace with LEDs, our cost line would be roughly half of that. So look at the darker colored bars at the bottom. That would be the cost line with LEDs for operations, maintenance and energy. The $184,000 that is shown in year number one, that would be used to pay off any debt service if we were to take a loan to complete the project. And that debt service would be paid off somewhere between 10 and 12 years. Every year after that payoff point occurs, the darker colored bars on the right, the top portion, that is what we would save every single year thereafter. That would be money in the bank savings. If we choose other methods of directly funding the project from reserves, for example, that savings occurs immediately and it would be $184,000 over current expenditures per annum. So we have some options on how we want, would like to pursue this project of replacing the streetlight system. Next slide please. There's three fundamental approaches. One would be continue replacing fixtures as they fail. We have about 70% of the fixtures that have not been replaced. And so the 30% that was alluded to in the prior slide is the fixtures that have either been constructed as brand new, usually in, as a result of development. We've had a few projects of our own that have replaced fixtures, but most of those fixtures of that 30% have come about because they have, the, the original fixtures failed and we had sub replace them in the matter of maintenance activity. Pardon me. That is a slow way and an inefficient way from a cost of construction and materials manner. It's also an inefficient way because the savings accrue very, very slowly. The second approach would be a conventional design with staff or consultants, bid the project out and have a contractor do the installation. It is our anticipation that, given the current staff workload and resource available, that, that would take approximately three years from beginning to end. Again, delaying the amount of time that we would be accruing that $15,000 per month savings. The third approach would be to use an energy services company and I'll refer to that as an ESCO frequently. You've already heard me say that. And that energy services company is a specific type of company that is authorized under Oregon law to provide professional engineering, financial and construction services, all as one lump kind of company. Another way to look at it is a similar product is called a design-build contracting method. And you may have heard that around the construction of buildings typically. The energy services company can provide us a lot of benefits. So let's, let's turn the slide and we can go through a little bit about what the ESCO entails. So it's qualified through the state of Oregon's Department of Energy. It's a single procurement. It's used to purchase a complete package of services which are enumerated there. They do an audit. That's the first two bullets. And then they do a design. And then they handle the purchasing and installation of all the equipment. They manage all of the selection of these vendors. They do the onsite project management. They commission the product. They train the staff. And then they also guarantee the energy savings that will occur throughout the life of the project. Oregon has eight ESCOs that are qualified, two of which are capable and interested in performing streetlight upgrades. That is what an ESCO is. So let's look at a justification for an ESCO. I've already touched upon the quick execution component, creating a significant savings and much sooner. An ESCO, by the way, I should have said earlier, can, can deliver our project in 12 to 15 months. That's the best estimate we have presently. We don't have time in the staff to deliver the project. Excuse me again. ESCOs are specialist type organizations. They have considerable experience. They've delivered many projects in the past. And so they can reduce our risk through better engineering and more knowledge about the project. They also, because of their high volume of purchasing, they get preferred pricing on the fixtures themselves and the controls. And an ESCO also has deep knowledge of different lighting control systems and how they, so they could assist us in that selection. An ESCO would be selected through a competitive request for proposals process. So we would have scoring criteria that would be established, that would be varied in their, in their nature and cost would be one of those components, as is their past performance and their capabilities specific to our organization's needs. We have begun an experience with an energy services company. You all probably recall that Oregon Department of Transportation asked that the city of Springfield install 300 plus lights on Main Street and South A Street as a part of the emergency pedestrian safety project. They did that because they felt that we were much more capable of delivering a project quickly. They gave us a four-month window in which to complete the entire procurement, contracting and installation process. As a result of that need, we selected McKinstry, a company that is in, one of the two energy services companies in Oregon with municipal lighting experience. And they are in the process now of delivering the project. They will demonstrate their capability in the midst of that project. And so we'll have a good benchmark for future consideration. And we anticipate that they will be interested in submitting a proposal should the council choose to use an energy services company delivery method. So that concludes my presentation. I think now would be a good time for us to consider what approach might be best.
Question. The State Highway Project, where'd that funding come from?
That is state monies that come from the Highway Fund. I don't know the specifics of the color of the money, but it was money that was established as an emergency project.
As long as somebody else paid for it. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Joe.
Thank you. Brian, I got just a couple of questions just to clear my mind. I,
Thank you. Brian, I got just a couple of questions just to clear my mind. I, I, I like option three already, just so you know. But I got a question with the sub connection. Play on terms. With us in regards to the lights and it looks, you know, obviously we have a deficit that costs money, et cetera. I want to know if there is anyone else that we can use and it's, and it looks like you hit on it with a, to a local line worker qualified contractor. But, uh, I want to make sure that, that we are getting the best bang for our buck for the citizens. And that, um, I don't want to pay sub at a profit for them as them seeing it milk and a cow. And so we have a responsibility to the, I don't care who's paying for it. We have a responsibility to them to make sure that we are paying the least amount that we have to. So it has that, that whole, uh, statement of, um, LED replacement would be contracted to a local line worker qualified contractor, not performed by sub with an estimated economic benefit to the committee of $1 million. And, um, so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how that, how that plays into your conversation in regards to assuring me that, that sub is only doing what they, that they, what they have to do, I guess, by some, some code or law or whatever. But, but we're using, uh, local folks, local people to take care of all the other work that sub, that we're not required to have sub do.
I, I understand your interest and I support it fully. Sub has indicated that, well, let, let me, um, answer you this way. Sub has control over about 30% of the poles that the lighting system is on.
Right.
Their control can be delegated to a qualified line worker type of company. And in the ODOT project, they have indeed done that. And that is what McKinstry did is they found a contractor that was qualified to do work on subs poles and sub has approved of that. And so that's how that is going to be done in the, uh, emergency pedestrian safety project. As a follow-on, sub has indicated that the timeframe in which we want to do the project um, does not allow for them to do the work. So there's no expectation that sub would do, um, any of that, the work that is on their poles. It would all be contracted with the same contractor to do all the work on city and sub poles.
That's an excellent answer. I appreciate that. And the last question I have in regards to the smart lighting, smart lighting control system, the numbers, um, the numbers that you're using for savings per year that's projected out, um, that the payback is 10, 12 years out. The cost of the smart lighting control system, is that part of those factored in numbers? And if so, what is the cost of that? And what would those numbers, how would it affect those numbers if we stayed with our current system and not using the smart control? I, I want to figure, I want to know if it's worth the money.
Yes, understood. The, um, smart lighting controls are included in the 12-year payback figure, approximately 12 years. Non, the, the conventional controls, the, just a regular photocell would be the payoff at approximately 10 years. So there's approximately two years of additional debt service, if you will, before we get to pay off due to the light, smart lighting controls. Now, the financials associated with smart lighting controls have to be done by the, uh, energy services company on the most cautious method that is appropriate. And that is done because the energy services company is guaranteeing the energy savings. Well, the energy services company can't guarantee how, uh, Scott Miller and Brian Barnett will choose to operate that smart lighting system. And so they don't guarantee much savings at all. As a result of, as a result of that, I think that our savings will be deeper than can be in, included in that projection. And the second thing is, is that smart lighting controls allow us to have much less management involvement in the lighting system. And that management involvement that we do have is, is much less expensive because I can sit at my desk just as I am today and I can manage the light system. I can find out where the troubles are and get them resolved. It also helps us deliver a much higher quality of service to the citizens. They're going to get quicker response to outages, for example. It also provides us some flexibility in how much illumination we provide on the road.
Yeah, I'm familiar with what it does.
So.
Yeah, I, I'm totally familiar with that. I didn't mean to stir up a, a bunch. So, so basically what you're saying is, is it runs about a third of a million dollars.
Um, I, I don't have that number at hand, so I can't confirm it, but I, I, I suspect you're on the right track.
So 184 times two is what I'm getting, about 360, 160, $364,000 on top of the cost of poles. But the way it's projected out, it seems to, that I'm not adverse to that. But I just wanted to make sure that, that, that wasn't such a big number that it was kind of ridiculous to do. So I'm good with option two. Thank you.
Leonard? You're on mute, Leonard.
Thanks. I'm, um, I'm looking at these, um, before and after photos on the L E, LED installation. It looks like these are, um, the, the LED bulbs are on the same poles on the same fixtures. Would, would everything have to be replaced?
Uh, just the, just the fixture needs to be replaced. The arm, the pole, it'll all stays in place. The wiring remains in place.
Okay. I, I guess what I'm struggling with is if you're just replacing a fixture and you're replacing also, I'm sorry, the, the smart lighting controls, that, how, how does that add up to 2.3 mil? I mean, is a, i- is it mostly labor or what's, uh, what's going on with that?
Um, well, there's labor, there's materials, and then there's the design and engineering component of it. Those three components are the, are the cost.
Okay. And, and I apologize if I was sleeping through this, but I, uh, what, what was the, uh, overall cost on the ESCO and on, um, and on replacing the intangencies as they burn out?
Well, the, uh, total replacement cost is 200, 2.3 million dollars.
Okay. But, but i- is that for any of the three options? I mean, for the ESCO or we do it ourselves?
Well, I don't, I don't have figures at hand about what it would cost for staff to do the work or a consultant to do it on a design bid build approach. Um, we are, we are building a significant deficit with sub because in other words, we're not paying enough each, uh, year to cover the cost of replacements. The reason that deficit is occurring is because, uh, the, the current intergovernmental agreement with sub for maintenance caps the annual increase in maintenance charges at 5% per annum.
Okay. Well, I, I, I was just thinking that there might be a significant savings by replacing the bulbs as they burn out. I'd, I'd love to get that figure if you could get it.
We will do that. Um, I do know that it is substantially more costly to, uh, repair in that manner than it is to do a wholesale planned repair. The simple reason is that, um, when you're chasing trouble calls, you have a lot of drive time to get to the site and then respond, you know, and then return. And you're only doing one or two, um, fixtures a day. When you can apply a lot of people and a lot of trucks all at once, doing them one after another, right down the, the street, then you get a lot more efficiency of production.
Okay. That, that's all I got. Thanks.
Are there any ESCOs that are local? I know you said there's eight in the state of Oregon. Are there any that are Springfield based?
Uh, I, I am not aware of any that are Springfield based and I need to clarify, there are eight authorized ESCOs, authorized by the state of Oregon. Many of these ESCOs, well, really there's only two who are, um, relevant to municipal street lighting. Um, McKinstry I already mentioned. The other one is called Amoresco. These are very large companies and they do projects across the nation.
Um, just sort of echoing what Counselor Fischner said, I mean, I, I would love to see as much of the, the jobs and the work stay as local as possible. So that is part of it for me is just thinking about, um, how do we, how do we keep that work as local as possible? And I still understand the efficiency and wanting to save money. Thanks.
Damian and then Steve.
Hi, um, I guess my question, well, my question is about the materials that are being replaced. Is it any, is, is it possible to, uh, recycle or repurpose any of those materials? And if not, uh, how could we be guaranteed that they will be disposed in an environmentally sound manner?
Well, Counselor Pitts, that's a great question. The energy services company would have the responsibility of dealing with the results of any equipment that's removed. They, you know, there, there's, they, we can provide them direction on an outcome that you might want. That I don't know if that would come at a higher or a lower cost than how they traditionally handle it. I would presume that there is, you know, there, there are some recycling mandates that exist in the state. I'm not very familiar with them. Also, some of the materials are hazardous waste and that would be required to be handled in a very proper fashion and, and documentation of that. Um, and so I know that that would be handled in that manner.
Steve?
I'm, I'm sort of familiar. I was part of a similar project like this a long time ago. And, uh, it was 2000, 2000 lights we sw, we swapped out. But anyway, a ladder truck goes down the road. He lifts the, lifts the technician up, pulls one lamp off, puts another one on and goes on to the next one. Goes rather quickly in most cases. Uh, then the fixtures were piled in a, in, in the yard. They went in there with a drill or mercury vapors, with a drill and drilled every ballast. So enough could be used to get e- environmentally, in those days, I don't know what happened to, but that's, that's how, how that worked. Yeah. So this would be similar. The, uh, apparently these lights all have what, what I call intelligence in them, a microprocessor at each one. And I'm curious, uh, how does, how does that connect to, uh, the main, main station? In the old days you go through the wires, but it sounds like this is going to be maybe even a satellite or something. I don't, not sure.
Okay. So the, the, uh, the current, um, twist lock photocell, which I know Counselor Mo, you would know what that is. That photocell is just twisted into the top of the fixture. A smart control would also be twisted into that same socket. The communication technique varies between vendors on which type of product they're using. Some are cellular telephone based. Some are, um, low, um, low power radio where they hop from one to the next, to the next, kind of in a daisy chain, where they actually create a network, a mesh network. Um, others, um, do have a hub and spoke approach where you have one radio tower, maybe two radio towers, and they all report to that one tower.
Yeah, technology has changed since I was in it. And, and I'm, I'm thinking about parking meters downtown when you put your Visa card in them. That communicates intelligently. That's, it's amazing. But in this case, uh, intelligence. And, and I guess the only just question I asked is talking about designing the system. There isn't a whole lot of design, is there? You just go ahead and swap them out and they probably set up the, the control system. But I just, my comment, that's all. You don't have to say anything. Thank you. I, I love it. Good.
All right. It sounds like we're in option three.
That, that's great.
Did I, did I mistakenly say option two, Brian? Okay, I went with option three. Okay.
Yeah, you had to solicit is what I heard.
Yeah, that, yeah, that makes sense. I just want to, I was getting my head mixed up with the last presentation. So.
Yeah.
All right.
So Brian, do you need more direction than that?
No, this is quite satisfactory. I appreciate your, uh, comments and we will consider them as we go forward with the request for proposals and contracting.
One last question. Where's the funding come from?
Well, that, that question remains open. We could do a variety of techniques. And if you want to option those right now, I can talk about what I know, but I think it'd probably be best, uh, deferred to another conversation.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Perfect. Um, we have Seda after this. So, um, I believe we are on a different link for Seda. So we're trying, going to try to get, do the hat trick of links for, for the meeting. So, uh, we will see you on the other side. We are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
I hope I can find my way back.